Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the, um, the agenda as submitted.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, July 2nd.
No one has any corrections or additions or objections. I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to approve the minutes as presented for the July 2nd regular meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item under financial. Item A is an audit presentation from King &amp; King CPA LLC. Mr. King is here tonight and we can't hardly wait.
Well, Mr. King, last year that adjusted one that you had to redo that. That original copy, I did destroy it. I burnt it in my brush pile, so it is.
Good for you.
Ashes. No record of it, uh, except me recarving the foot when I broke up.
Recarving the foot. Oh, please.
Glad to add it to what we wanted.
All right. Well, we did our audit and things went well. As far as I know, we don't, we don't, we didn't have any recommendations or comments. It's, uh, we had a, the bookkeeping is in good order and, uh, we didn't have any adjustments. So, so with that said, what we do now is we make up a kind of a, it's, it's, um, information from the audit report, but it kind of gives you an overview of where you've been and what's going on. And so if you have this, the sheet that I just give you, um, it gives you a history of the last four years. And, uh, the top section of that page is the general fund and the top line is cash. It gives you the amount of cash that's in the, that's, uh, that the township has as of June 30th in the general fund. So we have cash, accounts receivable, which is your state shared revenues and other miscellaneous receivables, other current assets, current liabilities, and then your fund balance. You can see this year that your fund balance increased from, from prior years. That's a good thing. Primarily that's because we had an increase in property taxes. Um, I believe a millage went through and so we're collecting substantially more, uh, property taxes and we probably didn't get it all spent. So, so that accumulated into the fund balance. But you can see last year your fund balance was 385,000. This year it's 513,000.
Yes.
Well, the 385 is inaccurate though, because if you look in your blue book, you guys revised it to 396. I called their office to give them a heads up and they said, yes, we did change it to 396 because they took the franchise fee from Comcast that happened after April and backdated it in to bring it up. So that number does not correspond with the book. So, just whatever. It's not a big deal. But I did call and give them a heads up. I didn't want them surprised.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. The year before that it was 479,000, the year before that 451,000. So then the next section that we have there is revenues. And your first line is property taxes. You can see this year we had 298,000 that we collected in property taxes. And last year it was 154,000. And again, that's because we passed the millage. Your property taxes had been steadily decreasing. It went from 170,000 to 160,000 to 154,000. But, uh, now we're up to 298,000. Uh, in our governmental revenues is your state shared revenues at 299,000 in state shared revenues. And then here we have the other revenues down through there. Um, per total revenues of 689,000. We had expenditures of general government of 257,000, public safety 148,000, public works 164. Our total expenditures was 571,000. So our total revenues that we took in was 689,000. We spent 571,000. It gave us a change in fund balance of 117,000. And that's why, that's how our fund balance increased to 513,000. Parks and Recs is just kind of rolling along. Stayed about the same for the last three years. We collect our, that intergovernmental revenues is your millage, county millage that you receive each year. Um, it's approximately the same. And then we have our, our expenditure for recreation and culture, 20,000. So we took in 19,000, spent 20,000. Park fund actually decreased by 873,000. Eight hundred seventy three dollars. And so we started the year with the 322,000 in the fund balance of the Parks and Rec and we ended the year with 321,000. We have our liquor law enforcement. We have cash of 16,758. We have due to other funds, 3,958 dollars. Gives us a fund balance of 12,800. We took in 3,867. We spent 4,251. We had a net change in fund balance in the liquor law enforcement fund of 377 dollars. And that gives us an overview of the three funds that the township has. If you have any questions on, on this sheet, you're more than welcome to ask and I'll try to answer them. And if there's none, then if there's any questions on the report, you're welcome to ask any questions in the report that you have.
I have one question. On the liquor control point. You've got quite a bit in there yet in fund balance. What would be an ideal amount to have in that? I mean, are we high?
I would say so. Generally speaking, I mean, this is just a rule of thumb, but the, you know, the MTA would say 25% of your, um, collections is a year's worth of revenues. And your year's worth of revenues is 4,000 and 25% of that is 1,000, you know, so, um, I don't know why you would need this much money in your liquor fund, but it's not an extreme amount.
Well, circumstance caused it. And now circumstances alter it in that when they make a liquor inspection, if it's a bar, we get a lot more money even if it's a party store. Well, we keep getting more party stores. So because we pay the same to the person to make the inspection, before there was excess because of the bars. Now there's a debit because of all the party stores. So it'll probably be down about a thousand dollars this year when we wrap up next spring. And I'm willing to let it go down a reasonable amount before we have to adjust how much we compensate the person that does the job. Because all of a sudden the state's going to say, hey, that money, you can't spend it for anything else anyway. And we're gonna, we're gonna inspect it, give us that money back. So just so we get it down to a lower, then adjust accordingly.
I would agree with you that there's, that you can't spend it on anything other than for liquor inspection. So there's really, if there's, if there's a way to get it down within, you know, uh, in a reasonable way, I will, I could see that.
That's all I wanted to know.
Sure don't need that much in there for a labor activity that we've got.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question that isn't directly to the audit report, but there was a note about spreading the cost of the audit over the three funds. Is that something that would, that is, it occurred to me that it might be the right thing to do to have it come out of the general fund because it's a, a general fund administrative, um, operation.
Costs is incurred because of the fund.
I don't know.
There is, there is extra time spent.
Because of the funds.
Because of the liquor law enforcement. And there's extra time spent because there's a park fund.
I see.
So, so in the process of billing and coming up with our allocation for the, the total bid price, we're within our rights to allocate that if there's a reason to do it.
That was my question.
And then there seems to be a reason to do it.
And there's logic and it's not irregular to do that.
Well, if those accounts, that would be parking recs and liquor control, did not exist, our audit fees would be that much less.
And there is, there is a lot.
No, I understand. I just didn't know if there's actually administrative township expense that should come out of those funds.
Well, but every dollar you allocate to those accounts saves your dollar in the general fund.
For sure.
Are we allowed to do that like parks and recs?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was my question, actually.
It's an expense that we wouldn't have if we didn't have a parks and rec fund.
So then part of the audit we used to make in parks and recs to help keep ours.
They have to, they have to track down all of the CDs and all of the investments and the money that's made on investments and, and track every time I change from one bank to another. And that's a bit of paperwork.
Right. I always remember the impression all the, the fees from the, for the audit team was just strictly from the general fund.
Well, they used to. This is, this is a new and revolutionary idea.
And they have certain advantages, don't they?
Well, it's a good idea because it's accurate. The money is allocated to where it's spent. Plus it saves general fund money for other purposes.
Okay, we just discussed that the liquor law enforcement, we can only spend that on liquor law inspection costs. And we have excess monies in there. At least it would be, maybe of my opinion, excess money. So it helps bring that down because all we can spend that money on is for liquor law enforcement.
And maintenance of that fund. Makes sense.
Plus I could ask this company for a year to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I've bugged them for a year to do it.
Oh, okay.
Wanted to make sure it got done.
I just wanted to know if it was, uh, proper to do that.
It is.
And it is.
Well, we only have four established units, party stores and gas stations.
Eleven inspections.
Well, I mean, with the golf court, I guess, party stores and bars together, I think.
Yeah.
Well, anything that has any, because there's different classifications of liquor licenses. Anybody that has a license through Michigan Liquor Control gets inspected. And we currently have eleven.
You just haven't been to all of them, Joe.
Well, there's gas stations that sell beer and wine. They fall under a category, so.
There's quite a few.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, Mr. King?
No, I do not.
Well, thank you for coming.
All right, very good. Thank you.
To balance one up, so you did a good job.
He's doing a good job. Your stand is very close to where you're at.
Thank you.
Yes, very nice.
Good luck. Thank you.
Have a good night. And don't go that way. Yes, exactly.
Yes, I saw it. I'm chunky.
It was nice to see that the trend of, uh, the deficit, uh, general fund has reduced, got reduced. I mean, even if you look back on the taxes, it was 25,000. This year as opposed to, what is it? As opposed to, um, I mean, last year, I think, 94.
Right.
Yeah. So we're really in the, moving in a direction finally, yeah, in spite of the taxes.
Well, actually we're spending more on the roads than the road billings this year. But next year, we'll be good. Okay, moving on. Item B. Well, hang on. Yeah, we should have done it while Mr. King was here, but that's okay. Normally there's a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Okay, I make the motion to present, um, to accept, um, the audit as presented.
Support. Moved and supported to accept the audit as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. It wasn't last year.
Doesn't have to be.
Well, were you actually spending money on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're not spending money, so.
Okay.
He was wrong.
I forgot. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, moving on. Item B, the financial report. Kelly?
Uh, we began the month with, um, 244,203.10. Took in receipts of 56,097.84 and made dispersments in the amount of 163,115.52, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of 137 dollars, 137,185.42.
Okay, I make the motion to, um, accept the financial report as submitted.
How supported?
Moved and supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Our dispersments were large primarily because of the limestone on the roads instead. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. Under old business. As you know, a couple of months ago, we bought a landlocked parcel over on Fredmore Highway. And, uh, because it had been sold at a tax sale before and it turned into just a nightmare, what happened. So it was recommended by me that we buy it and try and get it connected to an existing parcel so it no longer be a way of mine. And as things go, what I thought was going to be a quick thing isn't so quick because there's more than one person that really wants to buy it. So consulted with attorney and the consensus seemed to be that we will, if the board approves, that we'll go out for a September meeting and we will accept the sealed bid. The minimum amount will be 2,500 dollars and they'll be opened at the township board meeting. And, uh, that's primarily it. I mean, we do have the right to reject or accept any bid for any purpose. So we're going to see what happens. Now, I also gave you an old survey that showed the building location and why it's, uh, it's really in a terrible location. It's a foot from the property line. It's less than 16 feet from this lady's house. She owns the house in front of it. So obviously she's concerned. Her property line goes through part of the building on that little pump house. But the gentleman behind it, what also he strongly wants a chance to bid on. So we'll be, if the board approves, we'll be sending out communications to all the neighbors outlining the procedure. And, uh, at the September meeting, whatever bids we receive, we can open them at the meeting. And the board can make a decision on who, who awards the bid. Uh, also included would be depending on the process, inside that building we bought is our living quarters. Now at that time, the board will have an option whether to, uh, require the person that is awarded the bid to remove the living quarters. Or depending on the amount of the bid, if it's large enough and it's of desires, the board could remove the living quarters. That's going to be part of the project on where we gotta get that stuff out of there. So, any questions?
I noticed that part of the bid requirement is that they, um, can join the parcels.
Yep.
How do you force that to happen if they bought it?
Well, when you do the title transfer, if you also notice on here, it says.
As a title, as a deconstruction.
Well, if you look at the last one on the first page, it says basically, the buyer is responsible for a new legal description. And that new legal description will be our parcel and their parcel. And it has to be approved by the county as a proper legal description. Then you do the title.
I see. After that happens?
Well, yeah, they're going to have to have a proper legal description to join them. And there's a package that the county has to join properties. And, uh, the attorney is probably going to handle it. That's why we put the bid at 2,500. That should be more than enough to cover our attorney fees. And go from there.
What's the downside on this? Because I see some of the downside, but I don't hear.
Well, big downside is, uh, well, I don't know if there is a downside of it.
I just see it in the eyes. I'm not sure.
Well, if, if you make somebody unhappy enough, they may bring legal action, but anybody can sue anybody. That's why we're going to have the lawyer involved in the process. And, uh, I don't know.
You're right. This has been a nightmare.
Well, it didn't go as smooth as I'd hoped.
Right.
But I think it's going to go all right. I mean, we still have some options.
It's a good-hearted idea.
If we don't like the bids, we can reject them all. And we would still have the option. We'd go in there, tear that doggone building down and sell vacant properties.
And the lawyer is comfortable with us rejecting on any reason, even if it's arbitrary to somebody's eye?
I just see that that's going to cause a lot of trouble.
Yeah, that, that concerns me.
Well, you can ask.
Me too.
Well, actually, if we go this way, I'm going to have the lawyer explain the whole process, kind of the way he did to me. And I'll get that to you guys so you understand his point of view. And we'll see what we get for bids, you know? We may not get any bids over 2,500. We may get two, may get more. And, uh, you have to go from there. So.
Isn't it, they're all somewhat bonded in this?
They're, if the board so decides, they put language in there that there could be a bond to clean, take the living quarters out.
Oh, stay up with the bond hook.
Okay. Uh, depending on the size of the bid, it might be possible if the board, so it'd be so inclined to, to use the excess money out of the bid to do that. Because any excess over what we have in it goes to the county, as they call it. We don't make it, you know? It's not saving us anything. But we don't know until you get there.
Who would be hired to do this?
If we did it?
Yeah.
There's contractors that, you know, business. But we'd have, but up until that point, if we decide to go that way, we would have to get egress in from
Yeah.
the property owner because currently it's landline.
Right.
So we would overlook that at once. But otherwise than that, I haven't been over it.
Is there a high likelihood of litigation?
I don't know. Human nature being, you never know. If the top bidder gets it, no, there's no likelihood. If you decide to do otherwise, it's always a likely. It's up to the board. It'll all be described. This is the lady that lives in front. Her house is 15 feet from our building.
Any comments?
I've been trying to buy the building since we bought the house from a gentleman who thinks he owns it and does not. That's why I do not. Otherwise I would have bought it. I was here with my cash the next day.
I know.
And, um, we agree that the living quarters need to be destroyed because it's nasty. The structure's in good shape. My husband's a mason. Um, we don't want our yard to look like Sanford and Son. We have a lot of stuff. My husband's had his business for 22 years. His equipment gets stolen on the job and I'm afraid of it getting stolen at home and I need it in the barn and out of my sight. Sharing a driveway with someone and having them 14 feet, six inches to the property line to my bedroom wall is very disturbing. I have two young children still at home that I worry about. I've maintained the, the grass and the field because there's coyotes. We saw coyotes as soon as we moved in, so I've cut the grass deck and I've maintained it. We repaired the roof because the roof was falling down onto our property and onto one of our trucks.
On this building?
Yes, on the building. I have pictures, but my, my husband's repaired it. So, um, the gentleman does want it. I don't understand how it would benefit the township to give it to him when he's on the other side of the river and for him to come through my property to use it. Um, I've done my due diligence. I have copies of every single deed, uh, every piece of literature on this property from 1968 when the tollers originally purchased it. There's no record of an actual easement for it other than the language of it changing with some split in 1968. I know the setback is 15 feet personally. Um, you know, if we go into a bidding war, there's going to be a breaking point. You know, we're trying to struggle and make it in this economy. I need windows for the house. I pay too much for my heating bills. I don't want to see myself losing this to some guy who thinks he's going to turn around and rent it to me and try to make money off of me because I, I have a need of heating the house to keep my children warm rather than him, you know? I just, I don't understand the need of it going to, I'm the parent parcel. The front part of that barn would have to be tore down because I own it. So there's a lot of issues with it. My next door neighbor, she's going to be up in arms. So between the two of us, if somebody else gets it, we may have a lot of issues with us calling every week and complaining because we don't, we don't know what their purpose would be for it. I know it was originally built and supposed to only be built as an auto shop and then deeded as a church. And since it's no longer a church, it was supposed to terminate any easement right of my driveway. That's the language in one of the deeds that I have. I have consulted an attorney. I have not retained him. I don't want to go in that direction. I need to make ends meet. I need to put food on the table. We're down to nickels and dimes with my husband's business, just trying to survive. So I know it's up to the board to decide, but, you know, and I have no problem paying lawyer costs for the township or for a survey, the taxes that were due. I have no problem with that. But I, you know, being a sealed bid, I'd have no idea what this gentleman bid. And it, it worries me.
And a sealed bid means that we're not to look at the bids and it would interpret to me, the highest bidder gets it. That's why you have a sealed bid.
Well, if the lawyer, if there's a way of doing it, you know, that gives township some options. A legal way that doesn't, uh, open us up to a lot of, uh, a lot of protracted litigation and, um,
May I speak as a resident?
This is a lot of follow-up.
As I sit back and see all of this unfold and the board can use its discretion at any time, from what I'm understanding, you can reject any bid, you can reject them all. Why could you not shift gears and say, we want to sell it to the person to whom it makes the most sense? You're going to, you stand to have litigation one way or another.
Because it reduces the overall formality of the parcel.
Yeah.
Why can we not if we have the option?
Right. And, and you, you're going to have a lawsuit from either this lady or the other gentleman?
It's the parent parcel. It's 14 feet, six inches to the property line, which is not a correct setback. Supposed to be 15 feet. It also leaves me, if it was sold to someone else, no options to build a barn because I can't build it in front of the house.
Right.
This makes no sense to me.
No, it makes no sense to jump through all of these hoops.
He has 50 acres, his own house, his own barn. He doesn't need it. The only reason he would want it is to get the acreage and then sell or rent to me to make money.
And he lives on a year old.
Yes.
We're complicating this. Why not?
I can certainly ask the lawyer that.
Why can't?
Just remember though, the alternative was if we had not bought it, it would have went to an auction on a tax sale and the high bidder would have gotten it. That's what happened five years ago. Well, and that's why we're trying to discourage that because the guy bought it online five years ago. That caused all the problems in the last five years.
But we can nip this problem in the bud.
Yeah, let's run it by our lawyer and see and make it.
I just think it makes the most sense to me. Would you want to?
Would you want to have your home with, with two young girls, with somebody driving up and down? Would you want to have your home with, with two young girls, with somebody driving up and down to a vacant building for lord knows what reason? It makes no sense to me, we are overcomplicating this issue.
Well, nobody can drive up and down if they don't have an easement.
They've already done it, the man that just got thrown out.
He trespassing, went in there and thought he was gonna get things in there.
Well, but you didn't own it, so you couldn't have the police get him for trespassing. Big difference.
Well, on my driveway, I could.
It's served right, it's landlocked.
And you should've.
But then do I-
Hang on, Joe, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Then do I put up a big gate, and then we have an issue with him trying to get through? My neighbor next door would have no problem with me putting up a gate because she shares a driveway with me as well, and she doesn't want someone driving in and out either.
Well, there's a lot of options.
I'm also concerned about, not just the problems between the two parties that wanna own this parcel, but if the township ends up in expensive and protracted litigation, that is not good for the township as a whole. So, I'm concerned about the resources of the township. I understand that maybe we could act unilaterally to do something to resolve the problem. But if that costs the township precious revenues, which are very, very precious now, because of the situation in the economy, you know, and there's a way that we don't have to put ourselves in the middle of it, that might be something to consider. I know that doesn't really address your concerns, but there's other concerns too to look at. A tax sale, although might not turn out very well, we're out of it, right?
Well, we own it now.
We own it, it's out.
That's all a done deal.
Yeah, we're, we own it now, we're not out of it.
Then we're gonna have to resolve it.
Right.
We walked right into it pretty far.
Well, the other scenario is, there are taxes due this year, even though we own it.
Already paid.
So, if we didn't pay them?
Well, there'll be another one in December if we didn't pay that, it'll go back eventually.
And then again-
Good reputation.
I mean, I would like to do the right thing.
I would like to do the right thing too, and I think the right thing is-
Most of all, but if, if, you know, we know what litigation has cost the township, you can just look at the general fund and you can see it.
Yes.
Hundred thousand dollars or more a year for the last four years, and we're only beginning to recover. And we still had, without the taxes, a twenty-five thousand dollar, we would've had a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit this year.
So, then before we take anybody's bids, if we can simply ask the lawyer, "Are we within our rights to sit down and say, 'What makes the most sense'?" To whom the selling this make the most sense?
I did ask the lawyer exactly that.
But that does not mean-
Whose life, whose life does it disrupt the most?
I understand, but that doesn't mean that the, that because we do the thing that's most logical and looks the most legally right to us to do, which is obvious, that doesn't mean we're not gonna end up in the middle of a bunch of lawsuits.
Well, and that's what, let's, let's ask him that.
And that's, and that's, that can be very complex.
And nobody wants that as well.
I'm not against doing what the township board can do, but I do wanna look at all the different things before we do it.
Okay, you said you asked him that question, what did he say about?
Well, after we pretty well discussed it, his recommendation was the sealed bid.
And why, what was his basis?
Right.
Well, and the basis is, I guess it's more than one, but the board always has the right to reject any and all bids, for any reason. Okay? So, you're not locked into anything if you don't think it's the way to go. And that would still open up all your other options. And I think much more than a auction-type setting would. And I think you minimize the litigation versus just selling it to one person without allowing others to be involved. But I can draft a letter if you want, explain to that. It's up to you.
I just wish that these letters, maybe we shouldn't have sent them, we should-
I didn't send the one with the orman.
No, you sent the other ones, let them know that it was for sale.
Well, it's public information.
And, yeah, let them find out. Alright, let's let Joe talk, she's over there.
Oh, your arms, she needs it, it's better to-
I mean, you're deeply into this subject, but would you explain how the property became landlocked in the first place? And do you have a zoning and planning ordinance that disallows for landlocked property? And if so, why would you open bids to non-continuous property owners?
We're not, nobody can bid unless they're contiguous.
Okay, so even the gentleman wanting to bid on yours?
He's continuous, but he'd have to trespass on my driveway and use my driveway too.
Or cross Bell River.
Or cross Bell River, and I don't believe they'll allow a bridge.
How is that contiguous?
Yeah, that's-
Because his land butts up to the back of the property.
Since property touches this property.
Right, that's all it's gotta do.
So, oh, so he can't access yours without going over the river, or coming around and going through?
Right.
And if you don't, you don't have to allow an easement?
But then it's gonna cause problems.
There's no record of easement, and, I mean, unless I need to have a lawyer grant them a letter to send him, discouraging him from bidding on it, saying that there is no easement, that there is no option for him. I mean, I, you tell me what I need to do, because I don't want a problem, I just, I, I want this done. And I'm so glad I did buy it from John Mullins accidentally, without the legal paperwork, cause he would've had all my money in his pocket, and I wouldn't have legally owned it.
I mean, can the court or so provide an easement in a situation like that?
It's been done, but it's rare.
And I was the parent property, and that setback right now is fourteen foot, six inches. So, in nineteen eighty-eight, when they split it, was that allowed? Where's the minute, the minutes from that meeting where they approved the split in nineteen eighty-eight?
They never do that, they don't do that in board meetings.
You're-
At that time, I don't think the township-
So, the county allowed the split?
The county approved the split, but you have to remember, the building was built before your house was.
The building was built in seventy as a auto shop, and then it was deeded to them as a church, and only to be used as a church. And-
Who's okay, the split though?
Church there?
County did.
They, they gave it to-
The township?
In nineteen eighty-eight, June fifteenth, they gave it to Grace Bible Church, which was owned by, well, Toller, Forrest Toller was the pastor of his own church. Vera Toller and, and Forrest were the original owners. And they had built the auto shop, and they deeded it to themselves as the Grace Bible Church, and keeping the mineral rights to the Tollers, and that's when it was split. And it said on there that if it was, they terminated use in nineteen ninety-seven, and it said that if it was terminated and no longer used as a church, that any easement for driveway use was to be terminated.
But they also, there was more splits than that, they also joined two of them from eighty-eight to what it is today.
Right, it was A, B, C, and D.
Where was that, new town to go to?
No, it's the house next door, there's a little L-shaped lot right behind that house, and then my house with the piece in the back, which actually was two at one time.
Flag-shaped lot, that's-
So, that's where we stayed.
Okay.
So, do you have another question, Joe?
I had one.
No, that's just, I was curious how it became landlocked in the first place.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
And it was split into one acre for the house next door to me, and then the little L-shaped, which he has to combine yet, so it's kind of a mess.
But she knew the building was there, and she didn't own it when they bought their house about a year ago. So, she knew that it was that close to her property when they bought their house. So, it wasn't like somebody changed something in that year. So, she knew that, and she was hoping to buy it someday.
Just didn't expect the cameras.
So, well, but all the problems you had there, even, not too much, but before the last year, you knew it was goofy. The guy that owned it was in Georgia, and nobody could get a hold of him.
His family, yeah, and that guy, and then the other guy's family kept showing up and taking stuff out of the barn, and they don't legally own it, so. And I don't want his family or him back because I've not heard good things about him, and-
And all these points are very valid, and even with the bid, when you open the bids, those can all be brought up. And then you can, you can make a motion, and you can give reasons for that motion.
Exactly.
So, I'm saying. I will say, though, five years ago on the tax sale, didn't they get thirty-seven for it? Thirty-seven thousand?
Thousand?
Well, my house was, John Mullins bought my house for fifty-nine.
Yep, the tax sale, where the block building is.
Ninety-eight. The tax sale?
When that was sold, I think they got thirty-seven dollars.
They kept getting forfeiture, and then they canceled the forfeiture.
Well, it seems to be that, oh, no, this lady gets it, it's gonna be more advantageous to the township.
Twenty-seven hundred.
How much?
Twenty-seven hundred at the tax sale, the first tax sale for D- D- Elka. September two thousand seven.
Sure that wasn't the amount of tax owed?
That's what, the sum of twenty-seven hundred dollars.
I don't know, cause I asked, and that's not what I was told, but I got it correct.
I've got every single one, all the way back to nineteen sixty-eight. So, if you want a copy, I'd be more than happy to let you copy it, I've got copies of all of them.
Okay, I'll take a look. So, anyway, whatever you guys wanna do is alright with me.
Well, if I, I wanna speak again, if I may please.
Sure, go ahead.
If you have the option of rejecting every one of those bids at your September meeting, why even go there? Why even go there? If you don't have to do it, if, if you're ultimately going to decide that Mrs. Gack is the most sensible choice. And if she doesn't get it and the other gentleman does, she's probably gonna sue you anyway. So, fear of lawsuit is gonna be there, as far as I'm concerned, no matter who gets it.
Right now, it's almost at the crack, right?
Right, I mean, I think the township has put themselves in this position by not speaking with Mr. Delosky first. I, I, I wouldn't do the bids, if you're not gonna use them anyway, why even take that step? I wouldn't do it.
I'm, is, is Mr. Delosky's a reason for doing this, like a due process for the bids?
I don't know, I didn't ask him.
That would be the only reason I'd do it.
You don't have any obligation though.
I would like clarification from Mr. Delosky on this.
I just, I have a-
Almost a pro and con on, you know?
So, what do you want me to do, invite Mr. Delosky to September, and then you can grill him over and then make a decision? You know what you want?
No, he could write a letter, tell us why he's-
But he can't answer all your questions if you're gonna keep changing.
Well, he could, he could explain to us why he is recommending the bid process with us having the ability, as a caveat, to sell it to whoever he wants. Why both?
It's up to you, or invite him to be.
It might be cheaper than having Delosky come to this meeting.
Yeah, well, maybe not, I don't know.
I mean, do we, do we not have the right to sell the property that we own to whomever we please? For whatever reason we please? We are the owners of the property. We don't have to put a property up for bid. If we, if I was selling my house, I don't have to put my house up for bid. You know, if I wanna sell it to this person for that reason, I can sell it to this person for that reason. And, and not be sued by somebody else. What right do they have to sue you?
It's not always the case.
And that, and that's probably, and that's exactly what's wrong with this system.
It's a little bit different, I think, there's a public entity versus, you know, private landowner.
And, you know, and our, our option as a, as a public entity is to get this on the tax rolls as quickly as possible, with the back taxes paid, we don't need to keep anything else, anyway.
My recommendation is that we have Mr. Delosky write us a letter describing his reasoning why we should do the sealed bids. And also, I'd like him to clarify, if we just sold it to a family here, what, what would be the risk of it?
Yeah, what's the worst thing that could happen? Always ask that question, you know? What's the worst thing?
Do I have to make a motion on that?
What, excuse me?
No.
Would it be helpful if I had my neighbors write letters to the township because they've had experiences with him?
No, but you could, if you wanna give me a copy of all that stuff you've dug out since sixty, wherever you said.
I mean, I can, I, I can bring the neighbors, and they can give you firsthand knowledge of experience and why they would not recommend him.
You mean your neighbor?
In proximity, in proximity with, I mean, I just- No, I don't wanna start a range war, and I don't wanna create ill feelings between neighbors. I just wanna have the right to sell the property that we own to the person that we think it makes the most sense.
I wanna, I would like to, just to have the basis for whatever we do, not based on personal issues-
Mm-hmm, right.
Or interpersonal, or-
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, but based, based on the needs of the party as they relate to the property, the zoning ordinances, and the goals of the township as a whole. I think it's, I'm becoming to base it on anything else.
And it just seems to me that whoever else might be obtaining this property, it might be a perk to them, and that is true. But if this lady doesn't get the property, it's a real problem. On more than the, the, the part of the building that's on her land, the fact that an easement might have to be created, or, or maybe refused, she's the one with the most to lose. Everybody else has something to gain.
The goal was to make a, yes, a more conforming parcel, as Roland suggested.
Yes, a more conforming parcel, and get it on the tax roll.
Yes, and to get it back on the tax rolls.
It would seem to be that the assessed value of her property would go up more with that attached to it than the guy behind her or herself.
Well, that's a good point.
I, I would think, therefore, getting more tax dollars.
Can do that, bring it back to in September, then you make a decision.
I think the worry about being sued is kinda way out there.
Well, I like going after the assessment value.
You've been throwing money at lawyers for, as long as that's been here.
Long, yeah, two more.
Yes, we're trying to stop doing that so much.
Yes.
Okay, well, here we go.
And we have, and thank goodness, you know? But, yeah, that's a good point.
No problem.
So, are we doing it as a motion, and what is the motion?
I'd like to see a strong legal opinion from the attorney, that we can do this, and the grounds and the basis, objective basis of why the township has a right to do it and what we benefit from it, and have it out there on the record. What?
What is it?
Selling the property to Mrs. Gack. Because that seems to be, from what I gather, the general sentiment of the board to do that.
Yeah, if we don't need a motion, we could just ask Mr. Delosky.
I just wanna see a, a legal opinion that forms part of the basis of our decision, and the objective reasons to do that.
So, we're not doing a motion?
Yeah, unless they feel that what we have to do for some obligation as a public body-
Right.
Public entity, to do it differently, and that may be where the sealed bid issue comes in.
Maybe so.
You know?
And maybe so. But, there again, if, if we're backed into a sealed bid issue, and we don't take the highest bid, are we not back to square one?
We'll see what the attorney recommends.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we'll see if we get that communication for you for the September meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, from there. Okay, moving on. New business, item eight, ordinance number fifty-six, the Semco franchise agreement. We got this several months ago, and we're looking at it, we had reviewed. The Semco franchise agreement runs out in fifteen, I believe, and they're just trying to stay ahead of the game. The last franchise was also thirty years. They paid to have our attorney review it, they're gonna pay to publish it in the paper. I don't think legally you can refuse them, and they've told me that currently in the state of Michigan, they do not pay a franchise fee to any city, village, municipality, or township. So, we can't get any money out of them, so that kind of limits our options.
Yeah, it's not exclusive, so somebody else can compete with that if they like.
And you can cancel, if they make you mad, there's language in here that you can cancel.
And that too.
So, they asked, choices being what they are, they would prefer a ordinance. So, we put it as ordinance number, township ordinance number fifty-six, and that's where we are.
What was their reasoning, what was their rationale to request an ordinance as opposed to just a contract? Cause we don't do most of our contracts as ordinance.
Years ago, the last franchise I got was held to a public vote. Well, they don't have to do that anymore. So, your two options- So your two options are ordinance or board resolution. And they said, you can't do it either way, but most of them do the ordinance. So it keeps a good record of it in the ordinance book as number fifty-six. I asked them and that's what they said.
I make motion to accept, accept ordinance fifty-six, the Semco franchise free, franchise agreement.
No support.
No support to approve ordinance fifty-six, Semco franchise agreement? Any discussion? Uh, a roll call vote on this one, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Um, Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Item B. Planning Commission resignation of Jennifer Anderson and appointment of Denise Page. In front of you, you have a copy of communication from Jennifer stating that due to conflicts and scheduling problems, unfortunately, she has to resign from the planning commission. And she served a number of years. And I guess I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Jennifer Anderson with regret. Wish her well in future endeavors. And appoint Denise Page to fill the term of service on the planning commission.
I support that and I want to follow up. Jennifer did an excellent job. And who knows, perhaps that once she, you know, some responsibilities uplift, maybe perhaps we could get her back on. So she's very, very good planning.
She also served admirably in the zoning board as well.
Very good student.
And Denise coming on, she is an experienced planning commission, very good one too.
I'll support your motion.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion? I don't know. Did Joe support it?
I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, moved and supported. No other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the motion carries. Okay, item C. Joe's got it. Okay, it was requested or asked if we would be willing to post this sign. I said yes, but then it was brought to my attention that because other folks might want a sign posted, that we should go through the process of having a board motion to do it.
I move we do it.
Oh, support. We don't need a lawyer, a legal letter on this, do we?
No. Okay, moved and supported. To approve the request to post the four-H sign. Any discussion on that?
Where's it going to be posted?
I think I can put it on one of posts on our township sign without blocking the view of our sign. That way you can see it.
Three directions in the corner, okay? Four-H is a great organization.
No other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item D. Clear zoning proposal, farm-based codes. For a number of years, we talked with the planner, the planning commission about if there was something we could do in ADR to alleviate the problem of getting a lot of variances because of the closeness of the buildings to the street and everything else. And that was discussed again this year. And our planner came up with item three D in your packet. And then second, I'm going to turn it over to Joe and he can fully explain everything that's in it. I tried to make a couple of points in your update, some good, some not so good. And see what you think. Joe?
Okay, basically, we talked, um, since we had kind of, it's been a mull building and we didn't have that issue with the, uh, the proposed mining there at the golf course there on County Line. We thought this would be a great opportunity to look into the ADR question. As Bill says, if someone wanted to build an ADR or redevelop, they have to get many variances. We saw that with the service center there. So we asked Rod to come up with this plan here to look, to look at the ADR project. And as you can see, there are ten points that he was. A synoptic survey of the area by consult, look at existing conditions in the area, establish a framework for desirable condition. Two, develop a regulating plan, so it's a zoning showing how building form setbacks will vary depending on a body road classification. Develop a use matrix, use permitted in district by floor, ground versus upper and road frontage type. Create standards by building type, multi, single-story, non-residential, multi-story, mixed-use, multi-story rowhouse, residential, multi-story apartment, condo, civic institution, attached home, single-family, home, and open lot. Five, develop a building element section addressing ground floor design function, upper level windows, pedestrian openings, canopies, audience buildings, lighting, balconies, et cetera. Develop a functional. Six, develop a functional element section addressing loading, HVAC service areas, et cetera. Develop frontage. Seven, develop frontage topologies, how the area between the front lot line and building face will be treated. Eight, develop landscape and screening area section. Nine, develop a sign section. And ten, create a biograph of ordinance. He has a preliminary cost of estimate of thirty-nine, three thousand nine hundred dollars.
What's HVAC?
Heating, ventilation, and cooling.
Oh, okay. An ADR, number one. Develop landscape and screening areas. We have problems in industrial of them spending so much money. People in ADR aren't going to be able to spend money for this. What, what we need is just a plan so we can alleviate them going to get, have to get zoning approval. We don't need all this.
Okay, which areas do you, do you not?
Steam is for a single home. We've already got that. We've got that. Multi-story, is it allowed there? I'm sure we got our ordinance on that already.
Well, I don't know.
What's a rowhouse?
Um, attached home, single homes, open lots. Ground design. We're going to tell them how they can design an ADR.
We do know, we have certain.
But not in a DARE. What we want to do is alleviate their problems. I mean, come on, it's a DARE.
Yeah.
There, and the buildings they're going to build, they're going to be just simple buildings. They're not going to be like downtown Green City or downtown Richmond.
I'm thinking there is ADR incorporated.
I mean, there's, you know, the main thing I'm as concerned about is somebody's got a house in a DARE and they want to put up a garage. They can't make the setbacks.
Yeah, but also too, we want to, just like in the bus, the business area, we want to kind of facilitate, make it attractive where people want to put businesses in there.
Well, all these restrictions are going to make them not, not be able to.
I guess, I think we're sort of ahead of the game here. I mean, I don't see it here becoming a little cityscape yet.
No, they don't even have sidewalks.
Townscape yet. I mean, that's a long way off.
Yeah.
It's not, that's in development.
I just think we need to make it easier for the business people, for the residents, be able to build
I agree.
without having to spend money.
If this is the way, then we should look at it, but I'm not sure how this is the way.
I, I, I just don't, I think it's too much.
Yes, it's too much to be overkill.
So you're recommending that we tell Mr. Arroyo that maybe to pare it down, make it more basic?
Yeah, more basic. That's, all we wanted is so if somebody wants to open, open a little shop on the corner where the little place next to risers is, that they can do it there. You know, and build a nice building. We don't need to tell, they're not going to build crap buildings. They're going to build a nice little building there. Put a little flowers around. We don't need great big landscaping. You know, just a few flowers and.
Bill?
Well, for Roland's question, the area right now, unless it changes, if you look at the zoning map up there, it's the little red area. See number eleven and number twelve right above the two of them, that little red area, that's ADR, that's a commercial zone.
Okay.
There are problems with setbacks, there's problems with drainage, which is, isn't prepared drainage. But I can't support anything that mandates what a building looks like at this point of our development. Now that's, in a master plan, that's supposedly a service, utility service area. And the day comes when you get water and maybe sewer, then you can start doing some stuff. But I'm not going to tell anybody how many square feet of windows they need in front of them.
Well, let's, then we pare it down and just do the setback.
Well, they can designate an area where you can have different setback standards.
Right.
I believe, and maybe some parking standards and even some screening standards. But to mandate, you know, how much window space you have in the front, I can't.
So, so we're looking at setbacks, screening.
Screening.
Parking.
All right, what do you mean by screening? Help me out here.
Well, screening, any time you have a business, depending on this location, you have to screen it from, say, there's a residence next door.
Like put a fence up?
Or in the front. That's why they always have berms normally. So you would have to, you'd have to do a lot of simple changes.
Yeah, okay. They're not going to be able to put berms. So it would probably be like fences.
Well, but even parking, if you went, you know, if you don't have any room, is there room to park on the street? Okay. Well, there's a forty-three foot easement on the side center of the road.
Right.
And.
You want, like to screen, will that be sort of like the fence, the solid fence set?
Well, normally the screening comes in, especially if you border something that's not commercial.
Exactly. We do have that, we have businesses right up against houses.
Right, and we have it right now when there's nothing there.
Screening them because it was the house next door. And.
Anyway, you can put some better controls on, I shouldn't say controls, but, you know, for, for the type of business that's going in.
Well, yeah, because that's already there.
Well, I turned in it quite a while ago to the planning commission, the sheets that you guys filled out for whatever you're approving. At times they don't come back with what they're supposed to be on there or what you really intend, what you're calling like a assembly or whatever might be, or F-one or whatever be. I, I always wondered about that. I never quite get those to come back through the.
If you look in your ordinance book under V-one or V-two, primarily it's all V-two right now. There's a list of.
I'm talking about a particular entity that you're going to be doing that. You know, what, what are you guys putting on that property? On some of that commercial stuff. There's some places that doesn't require a lot of parking and so on. If you can lean towards that thing.
Well, we have language now for how many parking spaces you need for the square footages of the building and the type of building you use.
Well, it comes in the building code, it doesn't always come in as what you have in the ordinance. But if here, though, Rod wants to address that knowing the size of the lots they're in ADR and the type of business that you go in, that the parking may be different than our other commercial. Right, that's right. Right. And I think that's reasonable. Because that does facilitate current business now. That's probably your biggest problem.
You could just insert, like you do, some room to move in the
Right.
ordinance that gives the planning commissions both some guidance and some latitude to address the problems in ADR without pitching it to the zoning board.
Well, you're still going to have, you know, there's, because a lot of the parcels have homes on them. So you're going to hit, listen, turn a home down, you're going to have problems no matter what you plan. That's why, you know, the one we had here tonight, that framework, that's not going to be a catch-all for the currently existing buildings. If you were going to build a new one, maybe. But now you get a drainage plan, which you have to have. And if you're going to have eight thousand square feet of impervious surface, you have to have a drainage plan. So then you need a detention or a retention pond. And there's not much room left for anything else. So it's, it's going to be, it's tight, whatever you do. And that's why Rod is going with the type, the old AC in Richmond where it's boom, 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 boom. But they have water and sewer, so they don't have, they don't need all those things. And they can park down the street because the side of the street is paved, which is needed right now. So, I don't know, I think start it easy and just try and simplify matters.
We want to look into setbacks, parking, screen, anything else?
That's it for right now, let's take a big step here.
I don't think you can waive how many square feet required as a drainage plan. So.
Yeah, how the world, with that one property on the corner of Palms and Semco, how are you going to get a drainage for that little tiny property?
Well, if you don't have eight thousand square feet, the property's not eight thousand square feet. So you don't need a drainage.
Oh, okay, that's what I know. Okay. All right, if they're small enough, they don't need them.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
No.
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 Go back, certify it.
All right, take it back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. There at least some progress is being made to alleviate some issues, which is good.
Okay. Item E. Budget adjustments. Uh, these came in primarily from what Mr. King said about
Right.
the auditors. They have signed an auditing fee to the liquor fund and the Park and Rex. And that's it in the Park and Rex right now. On the liquor fund side, we currently pay inspections and we pay mileage. There's an auditing fee and a miscellaneous fee. And after we, we got to clear up a couple of details, there'll probably be a worker's compensation fee, which may be another eighty-four dollars.
We're discussing that.
So we're just trying to assign the cost to each fund, which is the right thing to do. But it is a, it is a budget adjustment, so it's on the agenda. And need to make a motion or have any questions? We'll land it.
Well, that we make those adjustments as detailed.
I'll support it.
Moved and supported. Make the budget amendments as outlined in enclosure three E. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
India?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item F, revised road commission work order. Last month, we approved a work order in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars because it was my intent to apply for matching funds for work on Hessen Road by division. Because they anticipated the cost of fourteen thousand dollars. And when they looked at it again this year, they said, oh no, it would probably be thirty thousand. Well, at this point, we're not ready to allocate that kind of money next year for matching funds, you know, and you're not sure you're going to get it. But for another fifteen hundred dollars, they can patch it, so it will last for several years and see how it washes. So I'm recommending to the board that we approve the amount of five thousand in lieu of the one for thirty-five hundred dollars.
So moved.
We'll support that.
Okay, moved and support to approve the revised road commission work order in the amount of five thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Let's see, Mike now, it's not.
Yeah.
Tom Fisher retired now?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we have a new foreman.
Yeah, Tom did a good job.
Thanks, Elton. And hope everything goes good. Okay, no discussion on that? A roll call vote, please.
Sure. And, uh, Dan?
Uh, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mm, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is payment of the bills.
I make motion that we pay the bills as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. And? Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
India?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Citizens comments. Is your opportunity to address the board on anything that's concerned you or ask questions? We request that you give us your name for the record, but it's not named.
Do you have a, do you think to add?
With the citizens first.
Yeah. Roland, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you for your time and consideration of that and I can either wait for you to make copies or I can come by tomorrow and.
Don't stop it, Roland.
I just want to increase my property value and I feel with my stuff outside, it's not.
Yeah.
I understand. We, we, I know I sympathize with you, but we got it as a public entity.
I understand. I understand.
I heard similar right to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Roland, anything?
No, not today.
No, question. Are we going, are the county going to roll the chunky stuff there on, uh...
No, we thought we'd leave it in, back towards the mudbox it's going to be.
I'd like to leave it, but we're not going to. Uh, last week, they did the milling on Marine City Highway, and they covered two miles of melting. And then they, they put the rest in Ira. I was hoping they were going to get started today, but they didn't. In the latter part of this week or next week, they're going to cover it with approximately four hundred ton of limestone each mile. And then they'll go chloride, and then we done. So, but there was some snag in Ira or something. So instead of starting Monday with the limestone, I'm hoping tomorrow, but worst case, it'd be Monday. But several people have called, they're not thrilled with it.
Well, it could be dangerous, especially like for emergency vehicle.
We drive what conditions permit.
Twenty miles an hour, yeah.
We did this also on Lindsay and Buddy Gut, and yeah, we got complaints, but now that it's done, the people are smiling from ear to ear, because it does build the road up.
Hopefully, we can get some more next year. We have a couple more roads that could reuse it. And that necessitated spending a little more this year because that's a north-south road. We were doing the east-to-west roads. So we're putting the limestone on, and the next year it won't require it. So we spent it this year, we won't spend it next year. Received, finally received fire contract from Richmond today, so that should be on the agenda for the September meeting. And I put a sheet on the table, I've compiled a list of everything that we contract out to get, because otherwise you have to go dig and see, well, what does that do, what does that do? And just for informational purposes. Nothing else much going on. You have Mr. Cameron retired, and Mike Zoflets is the foreman, and hopefully it'll go well.
It'll go well.
He's a pretty good guy, so more experience he gets, the better it'll be. Uh, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything? Hearing none, we're up to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Move in support to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Standing adjourned.